Okay, I would like to reopen the regular meeting of the Bronxville Board of Trustees for November 12, 2024, and ask all to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, the mayor's report is really just sharing a few events, and I need everyone's help to add in what I'm forgetting, because this time of year is so busy, in a good way. We have our big take-back day this coming Saturday, 10 to 1:00. The shredder is going to be over in the elementary school parking lot, that's probably the most important thing to share, and the other collectibles, including electronics, it's all on the website, but they're taking quilts and blankets, and they're taking books, that's right, books, clothing for children and adults, they're even looking for dog beds, dog cages, there must be an animal shelter coming, so check the website, because the amount that is being recycled expands every single year. So I know the clothing was added, and the books were added in particular. It is leaf season, and just if we could ask you, so many of the landscaping companies are putting the leaves in the right of way, and not only is everyone swerving around these big piles, but the minute we have a strong rainstorm, they are all going to be in our sewers, clogging the drains. Because of this problem, many of our neighbors, I did a little mini survey, have gone to bag requirements. I think the trustees have been trying to avoid that, but we just need your help to keep the leaves inside the property line of the curb. Our wonderful movie theater is going to start sending out its solicitation letter, it's 98 years old, we've had it since 1926, and they're just hoping everyone can be as generous as possible, because, you know, some people think it's now a movie theater, and it's a totally non-for-profit organization that has movies, but also arts, education, programming, and frankly, they need our support, just like our other non-for-profits in the village. Jim, you might talk about the repairs on Pond Field Road, because people have asked me why those Yodocks are still there, and our Shop Local Day is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, and just, you know, this is when our merchants make or break their year from now till Christmas, so if everybody could, as they say, think local and shop local, keeps taxes down, keeps housing prices very high, and it keeps our village the small, lovely village that it is, so just please think when you're making a purchase, if you could think Bronxville first. And finally, for me, just a huge thank you to the Bronxville Historical Conservancy for all the new art that is gracing Village Hall. I mean, behind us is just exquisite around the room, in the building. Some of it was gone for a while, because it had such value, it's actually at an exhibit at the Hudson River Museum, and not only is that art back, but there are so many more pieces added, and a huge thank you to them for our continued partnership, and...
I don't know whether you mentioned this last time, Mayor, but the work that the Historical Conservancy undertook to repair the pillars at the entrance to the old Lawrence Park, I think there are three sets of pillars...
Yeah, I think I did, but it's worth repeating that they funded that in its entirety, absolutely. Do you want to mention the cleanup? It just made me think I forgot something up at...
Oh, at the nature preserve.
Yes.
Yeah, I will try to quickly get the time correct.
10 to 12.
10 to 12 on November 23rd.
Both days.
Oh, I thought it was an or, maybe they were trying to...
Well, they've now set the time, so come back to me in a second.
Come back to you, okay. Anybody else am I forgetting any other...
I would just throw in, because I think this is happening before our next meeting in December, on Christmas events already that the chamber is planning, so on Saturday, December 7th, they're bringing back the very popular pajama event at the movie theater, where the kids see the movie, and then they get hot chocolate afterwards, that's Saturday afternoon, the 7th, and then on Sunday, the 8th, is the tree lighting downtown. So Jim, is the tree, is the one going to be at the...
In front of the M&amp;T Bank, yes.
In front of M&amp;T Bank, okay, which is always such a nice event to have.
And I think the Junior League is doing their event.
On the 5th.
On the 5th.
December 5th, yeah.
Okay, so those days, 5, 7, and 8 are important days.
Yep, I'm sorry, on that note, did you want to mention, I don't know if you did already, the Junior League food drive that's going on right now? I think...
Yeah, I think it ends tomorrow.
I know, so if anyone's getting this, yes, it is fast approaching, so I don't know if they've been, I took some items out of there already, I don't know if the group has been coming by.
Is Gramington Village doing a small, having a code where people can sign up to donate dinners, buy a whole dinner at Gramington Village, so people who are still interested in donating food or meals for Thanksgiving can look at Gramington Village website.
But it is important to acknowledge that the Junior League did do a, they call it a Thanksgiving sides, where they not only buy turkeys for people, but they count on the rest of us to supply the stuffing mix, and the potatoes, and things like that, and...
Get it in by tomorrow.
Yes, this is the fifth year for them doing it, and it partnered with them, and you bring it to Village Hall, and then it goes right to a connection with our neighbors in Melbourne, and so, thank you for those holiday, because you're right, our next meeting is after all of these things.
And Mayor, just on the nature preserve spring cleanup, that will be Saturday, November 23rd, from, I'm sorry?
Fall cleanup.
Fall cleanup, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's right, just reading this email, spring, well, we do spring early at the nature preserve. The fall-spring cleanup, Saturday, November 23rd, from 10 to 12 a.m., usually it's sort of a fun family event, you know, kids show up, everyone sort of gets a bag, and cleans up litter, and twigs, and all sorts of other stuff, so that will be at the nature preserve.
And I know you're going to be there.
I will be.
Yes, thank you, thank you. Anything else before I hand it over to Mr. Palmer? No, Jim Palmer.
Now, the only item that I wanted to mention, yes, is regarding the downtown curbing and sidewalk improvements that you approved at the last meeting, are going to be starting next Monday slash Tuesday, so just basically a week from today, and the contractor is going to begin with the sidewalk and curbing work over at the intersection of Craft and Park Place, so...
What's the extent of that, just to remind everyone?
So, right, and to answer the mayor's question, so there are several areas that are going to be done, but Craft and Park Place, new drop curbs, handicap ramps, a small median on Craft at the intersection of Park Place, and bump outs of the sidewalk and curbs, all with the effort of reducing the exposure of the pedestrian in the crosswalk, allowing a little break for the pedestrian with the median, and it also acts as traffic calming. And then likewise, after Craft and Park Place, then the contractor will go over to Pond Field and Valley, and there we're going to relocate the existing crosswalk over to Griffin Coogan's from the soccer store, but pull it out a little bit, about 10 feet, so it's closer to the corner. Also, again, bump out the, when I say bump out the sidewalks, not unlike what we did over here at Pond Field, just reducing the crosswalk a little bit, relocate a little bit farther, means the vehicles coming up out of the underpass will be a bit more level, so it should help be a little more visible. The new island will be rebuilt, so right now those ugly Yodocks are there, because in conjunction with the Con Ed gas project, in an effort to have the police do the alternating traffic, we took down the previous island that was there, but we want those Yodocks, because it still helps delineate and channel cars to the underpass, so when the project is complete there, we're going to have a new median, a prettier median, and potentially some additional planting beds for our volunteer groups like the BBC. And likewise, after they're done there, on the west side, those existing yellow bollards that we've had in place for two years will be removed, once again, adding a small median down parkway as you approach the west side circle, channeling cars, allowing a little respite for pedestrians and the median, and then also rebuilding that median, and extending it, that triangle where we have the very large planters right now, there's almost no curb there, and pedestrians kind of walk on an angle across, and then again bump outs at Melbourne, where cars come out of the villages, out of their garages. So finally starting that next week, and we apologize the temporary inconvenience, but I'm confident, I met with the contractor today, and Landy's very organized, I think we can do that work while still during the holidays with a minimal negative impact, and from my perspective, hopefully the weather continues to be permitted.
So that starts on the 18th, and that will go for a month? How long, what's the expected...
It's kind of weather permitting, but I suspect it will take us into the New Year.
The New York, correct.
So, let's see, and again, if the moons are really in alignment, depending on where the weather was, how far along they are, potentially we could try to do some repaving of Pond Field, but I don't want to quite commit to that. So let's see, I just wanted to emphasize that. Other projects currently going on in the downtown, I had the chamber send out a notice on, over the weekend, which they did, there was some pourings being installed on Pond Field, if you will, associated with one of the businesses there from contamination decades ago, so the, a budding property owner did have a police officer out there to make sure pedestrians could cross, but essentially, there's some underground wells along Pond Field at the request of the DEC, they'd been there for quite some time, and a couple additional wells were being added, so that work was going on today, it'll go on tomorrow. Tonight in the overnight hours, it should be of impact to no one. Metro North is going to be installing sensors and cameras at the underpass to document when a vehicle, a commercial vehicle hits the underpass, and then takes a picture of it. So as the mayor had noted, they put some equipment on the tracks, solar panels that someone could see with a box, and that's tied into, that was tied into that equipment, so just wanted to mention that. And I guess that's it, and of course, the board has already reminded all the residents, the on-street outdoor dining establishments are currently in place through Monday, December 1st, at which time, at the end of business on Monday, December 1st, all the on-street establishments will remove their dining structures, and the village on Tuesday morning will remove those bollards that we have in place for some of those establishments, so that'll be done by December 2nd. I think that's it.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to approval of the minutes, subject to a few changes that we added today. All right, so I need a motion to approve minutes with changes for the executive work session of October 15th, as well as the regular meeting where the changes were put in for October 15th as well. Do I have a motion? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you, Mary Ann.
And everyone got that, the clarification that we're going to be, that we'll make in the minutes? Just the clarification under the resolution F.
It was what we discussed last time, the conflict of interest.
Yes, exactly.
And the legal opinion that there was none, essentially.
That was the only...
Yes, and that was the addition.
Perfect, yep.
Perfect. All right, new business, the first one is a resolution authorizing purchase and financing of software upgrade for the building department.
This is, that's very exciting.
It is.
It's really, really exciting.
Very much needed, and the old system is very antiquated.
It was great to see that.
Me, too.
Very excited about this.
Is that a motion?
I thought your excitement indicated a motion.
Motion.
I'll move it, I'll move it.
All right, and Mary, Mary, do you want a second?
I'll second.
Mary was the second most excited.
Can I just ask a question before? I just was curious about the annual maintenance fee of $12,500. It seems like the purchase is pretty much of a bargain, but then the annual maintenance fee is quite substantial? I just was curious about what that entails, what, you know, is it licensing, is it a licensing fee?
Is it upgrades?
It is, what it is, is that there's always, there's annual maintenance that we need, not the least of which includes upgrades to the software each and every year, if you will, so it's just those annual updates that come with any kind of, that come with any kind of program, and...
This is an estimate. The upgrades, right, we don't know what they're going to be every year.
No, but I, no, but I...
It's like, it's part of the contract, it's not...
Yeah, I think that $12,500 fee was in, and I should say again, we spent years at Nausium, looking at different service providers, and at the end of the day, the village currently uses Municity in the building department, however, our software is a level behind on the Municity, so this is going to take us to a modern version that will allow applicants to use billable forms, actually set up their own account, so they can even go in and access and check on the status of their own permit, so what we are getting as part of that annual maintenance is every year there is additional updates, additional fields that are added, it's...
Like, other municipalities use this, so people will have some degree of similarity and knowledge of...
And again, and this is, yes, so this is...
Contractors or...
In Westchester County, the principal building department software that communities are using is this Municity software, which we have been too, but we haven't, we were stalled and didn't go to that upgrade, so people can't access it online, so it is a great network of Westchester communities, and it just made sense, yep.
No, it's fantastic.
And it's going to streamline the process, which is what...
But if we can shave that annual maintenance fee off a little bit, of course, we always, you know, look for a detailed, but you do...
But we want to upgrade, we want to keep it upgraded, which we didn't do on the old system.
And you want to be able to call someone at any point in time, can you come out and do this? Yes, because we have a maintenance agreement, we will come, there's just things that will happen.
Yeah, it didn't strike me as out of the order, because I think a lot of these software as a service businesses, it's now just a subscription basis, you can't just buy the program and then walk away from the provider.
Okay, we had our two motions, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. All right, Jim, do you want to, you worked on the polling places.
Sure, it's just that, you know, sticking with the calendar, for the village elections for 2025 are going to be held on Tuesday, March 18th, so we need to file with the county our polling locations for the village, so we designate those locations here, as we've done in the past, Village Hall, this is again for village elections, 16 and 17 are here at Village Hall. Firehouse, I did put down here in the event that the firehouse would be unavailable for some reason, that we would reach out to the Reformed Church, but right now, firehouse is like last year, districts 18, 19, and 20.
Is it necessary to have three places? Is the county requiring us to do that, or, because we will have...
It's a, what the county requires is that we actually have, we have seven polling, that we have seven districts, that we have to have, because that's what's done in the general election. But, no, but that being said, we are able to consolidate, and by consolidating three to one location, that's pretty darn consolidated. So we consolidate as much as we can, you also don't want to, anyway, that's the answer to that.
That's been the tradition, and I think the residents need to know that the county is running the election, not the village.
Correct, yep.
No, that's important, because some people think these are locally run, and this is the Westchester Board of Elections.
Right.
All right, I will move that, and I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I think, Jim, you forgot to say, but the election, the village election will be on Tuesday, March 18th.
Correct.
Yes, Tuesday, March 18th, yep.
All right, now, the next one, I'm just asking, it says authorizing capital project for retaining wall at Melbourne, aren't we authorizing the evaluation, we're not authorizing the actual project, correct? We're authorizing a consultant?
Well, you're authorizing the establishment of a capital project.
Okay.
And what we, yes, because this will be a capital project, we don't, but at this point, yes, we're only retaining, we're only retaining the, you're authorizing the engagement of GMCE, which is Grossfield Macgory Consulting, to do a report, but also establish a capital project with an initial amount of $75,000. We don't know what that amount will be.
So it's two-pronged, okay.
Sorry.
No, no, that's, I just wanted to make sure we're doing both an evaluation of what we need and how much it costs, and we're putting money away to start it.
Putting money away, right, but at this point, just doing the evaluation for the 1,800, then we'll get the report, and then...
Perfect, would someone like to move that?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes.
That's unnecessary work to do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this is authorizing payment to our farmer Dave Phillips for managing the Giving Garden. The Giving Garden, just a little background, in its ninth year, this year we gave 300 pounds of fresh vegetables to our neighbors in Tuckahoe and Mount Vernon, and the Green Committee felt Dave not only gives hours and hours of time, but also often supplies some things, so they were giving him a stipend of $1,000, and we need to approve this, correct?
Yes.
I will move that.
Second.
Okay, question?
Yeah, just a question, so I know this one is for the 2024 season.
Yes.
Are we putting this into effect as a continuing stipend?
I don't think you need to make that decision, I think when we look at doing the 2025 budget, 25, 26 budget, we can discuss it at that time, if you want to, if you want, if you want to make it permanent, like we did for the historian, we will, you can put something in at that point in time, if that's the pleasure of the board, I should say.
Mayor, you said the food goes to Tuckahoe and Mount Vernon, but the resolution just says Mount Vernon Food Bank.
Okay, it also, well, it also goes to Ecap in Tuckahoe.
No, I think the board want to just change the resolution and just add...
Yeah, just, because it does, it goes to both.
And Ecap.
Mount Vernon Food Bank and Ecap.
Yeah.
Yeah, just to be, just to be...
Yep.
Perfect, okay, and I don't think we voted, we had two, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Alrighty, oh, Jim, this is your favorite, the lighting on the DeWitt Bridge.
Yes.
And Stevens.
And Stevens.
Yes, so as we discussed in our work session, it might be a little clunky resolution, because this is New York State Department of Transportation resolution, which we tweaked, but as we discussed, I will further clarify, but for our viewers, this resolution is to authorize State Department of Transportation to install additional lighting on the DeWitt Bridge, which is partially within the village of Bronxville, mostly within the village of Bronxville, and partially within the town, within the city of Yonkers, but we're authorizing them for the portion that's in the village of Bronxville, to add additional lighting on the bridge, to install that lighting beyond what's currently there, as part of their ongoing work, which, as everyone knows, it has been limited to one lane, and there's probably still a good eight months to, I don't know about a year, but certainly a good six to eight months of work on the bridge that has yet to be done.
Where it is...
And the DeWitt Bridge runs across the Spring Parkway and the Bronx River, and connects to Paxton Avenue, and DeWitt in the village extends to Parkway Road, and then connects to Yonkers on the other side. It's got some lighting now, but limited, but believe it or not, a lot of pedestrians, in addition to motor vehicles, but pedestrians coming into the village from outside the village, do also use that bridge, so it would benefit from additional lighting. So what this resolution is requesting is that in exchange for the Department of Transportation installing and constructing the additional lighting, that the village, consistent with all other communities that have lighting on state highways or state structures, will pay for the electricity that's generated by those lights, and replace those LED fixtures if they need to be replaced, and that's consistent with other communities. And what the board had discussed within the work session was, and the village had confirmed, that we are paying for the electricity for the existing lighting structures that are within the village limits at present. So again, resolution authorizes DOT to construct additional lighting, I believe it's the replacing the two and adding three additional, so a total of five lighting fixtures within the village of Bronxville that we would pay for the lighting on.
Okay, now, I thought four were in the village and one in Yonkers.
No, there's two there now, I'm sorry, two there now within the village of Bronxville, adding three additional lights for a total of five within the village, and I believe one within the city of Yonkers.
Okay.
Okay, so five.
All right, who would like to move that?
I'll move it.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion passes. The next is a resolution supporting a continued increase in state aid for local governments. This is, all of our colleagues, the New York Conference of Mayors, asked all the communities to have a resolution in support of this. By way of background, it's the first time in 15 years that they're actually going to increase aid to local governments. Just in contrast, they've increased aid to schools every year over the 15, but not to governments. They're adding $50 million to the budget, which is not a big number, given how many communities there are, but all the mayors and supervisors throughout the state feel like it's at least a start, as opposed to getting no increase for 15 years. My question, Jim, was how much do we get? It's a very small amount, but still...
We get just under $65,000, just under $65,000, so a little bit less than a tax point, but yes, but $65,000, and under this temporary program last year, I think we got a little less than 10%, about $5,000, but this is how difficult it is for, you know, for local governments to get additional money, so just under $65,000. So just under $65,000, and then we got the additional five, and that's what they're fighting for, is to try to maintain that and make it permanent.
Right, and I will say, all our colleagues, this is something that everybody in local government is unanimous in, and all the communities are passing a resolution. So I would like to move it, and do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then, do you want to talk about the library, the change orders? Some are change orders, and some are sort of add-ons to the, to the project, correct?
Yes, yes, so I really, I really consider this a, a housekeeping matter, in that the patio, as everyone knows, is now, is now complete, there were a series of change orders and/or adjustments, and that's, and that's explained in the, in the resolution here. The original low bid from Tony Casal was $646,000, and, let's see, what I did provide you was the, the revenues, expenses to date for the public edification, there were a total of $185,234 in adjustments, however, that includes $67,000 in landscaping that was specifically removed from the initial work, because the library and the village were going to evaluate it, and actually frankly, went with slightly less landscaping than was, than was originally proposed. So, but the landscaping nonetheless was, was done, and it was anticipated to be done, so that's included here as an adjustment. But some of the other items that will, we use the word change orders, but the, the village and the library thought it just made sense to do it at that time, including some repair work to the rear windows that the DPW wasn't able to get to, while the contractor who's, who's excellent with concrete and mortar and stone, did some, did some repairs, there were some adjustments to the rain garden. Again, the largest of that work is the, is the landscaping, and that's really not a change order, but rather an adjustment, since it was initially removed from the scope of work, but.
And I guess.
I think we just wanted to clear up that, you know, $182,000 in change orders on top of a winning bid of $646 might strike some people as, wow, that's a lot of extra work, but some of this, as the village administrator just pointed out, was actually for landscaping work, which was never part of the original bid, and, you know, obviously, we were always gonna do landscaping, rather than just, you know, leave a cement jungle where there should be flowers, so.
Right, right, another example on here was the main entrance, again, on the, the other side of the, the library, the main entrance, it just made, it just made sense to make some repairs and make that area safer at the same time, while the contractor was mobilized on site. If we had to start with a new contract, go back out to the, it would have been, would have been more, so. So all that, and the, of course, between, between the Friends of the Bronxville Library, the original commitment that the village had made of $150,000, the wonderful contributions of, I believe it was Amy Pollan, and then the other funding that the library had put in place has the, has the project totally covered in cost. The only thing that will be, and then what will probably be coming next, next month after this, will be, again, proposal for some additional lighting in the, in the front, some front walkway improvements, and, and you'll also be considering, probably in December, once we have estimates, the redevelopment of the workspace in the, in the library, but that'll be for, for December.
Can I just make a, a comment? I think it's, I think we should maybe make sure we're using consistent language on this, because I think we really call it the reading garden. I mean, I think we have in different places patio, or outdoor patio, but I think reading.
Yes, yes.
Again, on the budget, it says reading garden, so let's just make the resolution, you know, for the Bronxville Reading Garden.
Got it, yes, yes, I'll clean that up along with the comment on the adjustments.
The work on this has been wonderful, I think Landy did a great job, Tony Casal, and it's been such a great addition to the library, people are just enjoying it, even until November, you know, sitting out and enjoying themselves in the, with the wonderful landscaping.
And, and just in case it wasn't clear, this isn't actually additional money that the village is paying, this is just our approving change orders and adjustments that the library or Friends of the Library are going to cover, but we just have to approve it as sort of the sovereign entity.
You have the oversight.
That's a great, great explanation, thank you.
And just for those that ADA upgrade, as you mentioned, is coming next month, so we'll see the, the funding for that, correct, Mr. Palmer? That's in your next month's agenda?
Right, and again, the walkway's already in place, we're just gonna make it even a little bit more, a little bit more user-friendly, yes.
Right, that's what I meant.
Along with some proposed lighting, yes.
Perfect, all right, Helen, would you like to move it?
I, so move.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then, in order to purchase new equipment for both the Police Department and the Department of Public Works, the financing through debt, we have to have a compliance resolution that we are not doing anything, it doesn't have an environmental impact. So this is part of the regulatory debt service needs, so I have the motion, improving environmental compliance resolution for police vehicle purchase and other equipment purchases.
So move.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And then, Jim, do you want to end it with what we're purchasing?
Sure, so, and, and this is for the actual purchase of the police vehicles and the equipment for the DPW, so you're authorizing a bond sale of $177,000 for these four projects, which have useful life of three to five years.
Perfect, I will move that, and do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, trustees, did we forget anything?
Could I just add one other?
Oh, yes.
I forgot to say, just to clarify the public, and we met, the board met an executive session before the regular meeting, first to interview a candidate for police officer, again, with the, with the Police Department. The board had, for this, we've been working with a complement of 23 officers, the budget had approved going to 25 officers, so the board has been continuing to interview candidates that have been vetted by the, by the lieutenants and the sergeants of the Police Department. So the board did that at 5:00 PM, and then went back into a work session and had a presentation by our auditor, Alan Cassay of O'Connor, senior partner of O'Connor Davies, Muntz and Dovins, PKF O'Connor Davies, I should say, and a copy of the village's financial statements for the 20, for the 23, 24 year, and for that matter, all prior years, are available on the village website under the treasurer's page. So Alan took the board through the highlights on that, it was all very positive.
Which included an, effectively, an unqualified opinion, a clean audit.
And I think it's also appropriate to note that, you know, beyond just getting an unqualified audit, our auditors were very complimentary of the quality of the village's staff, and I think that the results of the audit, particularly in terms of, you know, results of operation versus expenses, is a, is a testament, again, to the quality of the work that Jim Palmer and Lori Voss and their team have, have done, and they have been, I think, you know, great financial stewards in terms of watching the pennies spend, and once again, revenues were higher than anticipated, but I think that that's just a product, as our auditor said, of appropriately conservative fiscal budgeting and, and planning. So I, I think all of us in the village owe a great deal of thanks to village administrator and treasurer Lori Voss. I can't imagine a more important function that they, that they serve beyond what they did with respect to the budget and maintaining the village's finances, and it was really an excellent bill of health, and I think we owe credit to where credit is due, so to speak.
Absolutely.
Well said.
Thank you, Bill. Also, I think it's important to note, we did go into executive session with the trustees and Alan Cassay without Lori, Stephen, or Jim Palmer to have, just show good stewardship and have a conversation with Alan about processes, whether, to see if there's any concerns that he or his colleagues have about systems, people, or processes, and they have none.
Perfect, all right, and I would just like to end, today is the day after Veterans Day, and to end our November meeting by thanking all the veterans, in particular, our Bronxville Village veterans, and we have many young people serving right now around the world, but just a big thank you to.
And two of our police officers were veterans.
That's so correct, so just a big thank you to every veteran, we, we're so grateful. Thank you.
Well said.
Do I have a motion to end our November meeting?
So move.
In a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we will see you, what's our date, Mr. Palmer, December? We will see everyone on?
The 9th.
Back on a Monday, December 9th. Thank you.